We all be live.
They said that said it not the damage was.
Well, last thing I forgot to punch the button. I'll probably send that. Charlie probably get back up. All of them. I used to have Tom Slater, Jerry, and Flynn. Not a curse word, not an old heck or nothing like that. I got Charlie in there. It's like the ship is in harbor. Like Nicky is coming to town. Did you learn the best like a sailor when you were a sailor?
No, I knew beforehand.
Are you a sailor? She is a sailor. Didn't know that? Make her mad. She'll show you. Tell you what will make you walk blind. My son. Kill all you. He's a sailor. He's learned some new words. Learns some colorful new words.
Should have known before.
In various languages.
I think he do, but he just didn't use them. Now he use.
Weren't you on the Carl Benson? Go YouTube sometime and look at the preparing meals on board of air travel carrier for like what six thousand feet. That's what she did shortly in those kitchens. He taught us an industrial processing. Three times a day. So we're going to do an interview with you to do our state of the county address. Yeah, can we do our state of the county also? Can we have one? We're just as much part of the county as you.
Sure, like if you guys want to submit one.
No more important than that. Yeah, we'd like to do one.
You can do one.
Be good.
Just send it to Edgar at Grand later.
Can do that. There's a different point of views rather than one.
No, I, I, he just sends it to us. This is my first year ever being here.
I understand. I thought maybe we were making him president or something.
Are you going to be able to move that?
Oh yeah, it's got hooks on it and we just lift it up. Yeah, somebody buy that. Those are industrial four cylinder Ford motors are plentiful everywhere. Somebody take that down. Yeah, somebody take that. I don't know how to have any of that crack like that because it kept it down to minus fifteen degrees. And Jerry went out there and started. He said, oh, we got a little more rain. So either crag lock or cracked in, but it had not been run that way. It's just got water in the cylinder. Yeah, somebody forty thousand penny.
Oh, somebody. Somebody could run their house off of it.
How you do? Chrome bar seat everybody up and walking desk or running around.
Stop.
Yeah, I forgot. You must think it was a table. That was a fact. Oh, you can't work it. Yeah, there's a lot of those rooms. I think that's what everybody's got in their minds too.
Is what? It's for me.
You know, worldwide pandemic. The media. Who's bowled scare a few years back.
Our SARS.
Our SARS. Bird flu, swine flu. Still got all the on the north end of the county. That's a joke, folks. I would gig in somebody. I could do it up there. That's why it's created Oklahoma. Well, it's my person. No reason we tell Oklahoma jokes because we're trying to leave markets well. Well, fresh air in here.
It feels good.
For the long meeting.
Look right over here. Come around this. Look right there. And see if it says what it says about the media card.
It says archive and it's got an A with a red thing in it. Does that mean the media card's full?
I thought it told me it had fifty-nine minutes left.
It says fifty-nine. No memory card, it says. Did you not put one back?
I guess I did.
If I hurry home, I get there.
Do you have one?
She's got paper towel wrapped around her fingers. I don't know if I got a bowl. Here's a look. I'm running to the hospital. She tried to kick me out of the hospital. And I told her I was a hell of a spin my Saturday.
Kiss of twenty-one.
I'll give you out too.
So your jokes. Okay. So forty-something has been retired. I thought he's buying it. Yeah, so we got a break in the shop.
Razor brush. A bit tougher when they get older.
Mother Nature Water Crocker down the road last night, so. Working, working, working. Oh, I'm gonna fix the water here. It has some.
Video. It says made above very top. It says video radio channel.
I'll send Charlie. I need at least six.
Video detection. Oh, video detection. It says video. It says video detected. At the very top.
Stay on, so. We've got something else matter.
I see six inches in the mouth. Just ate rock.
All rock cow.
Would you like to spell wheat city?
That's what I'm.
That's what I'm.
That big old mess is hell ready. Absolutely.
I don't know. There's not much to like be wild about. But like all my favorite sports are on season right now, so it's like weekends are dead. Yeah, reading.
You know, he has time of the year. So he gets around to become greats. So what is right? Marcia, I don't know. Is she in the office looking for something?
We'll call meeting order Young County Commissioners Court Sitting and Erector meeting. Monday, March the ninth, two thousand twenty. It is nine thirty-seven AM. I might note that this meeting posted the banner for the time required that all members of court present. Our clerk of the court. August gone within a little some kind of illness, so she won't be present. Keep her posted on all that. It's convenient place to answer.
Let us pray. Our only father was open for this day. We ask that you be with the family overseas to protect our country. We ask that you help people understand this virus that's going around, that it's going to be okay. Calm the fears. We ask that you be with us, help us do the right things for this county. We ask that you be with the local law enforcement, emergency responders. Ask that you help the sick and wants to be lost. Thanks we ask.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Out of number three, public comments, announcements, presentations. First off, here I guess we congratulate all of the primary winners in their candidacy and adoptions to those who weren't so successful this time. Best wishes for the general in their endeavor. Appreciate the services that those who will serve out the rest of their term. Masonic Lodge thirteen, thirteenth annual auction, Saturday, March fourteenth. That will be this Saturday. Just precise, would you like to?
Yes, sir. Well, Floyd has notified us that they've got quite a few consignments already. We're getting goods from counties around Young County. There'll be another large auction. There'll be, once again, various things to be purchased there. We'll start taking things in on Wednesday, the eleventh, at eight o'clock at the old ag barn until five o'clock that evening. Thursday, same, eight o'clock till five o'clock. We will start taking guns on Friday until noon. And everything will be shut off after noon on Friday because we have to get everything logged in, tagged, ready for the auction. So every, all the consignors have their records straight. I'm working with Marcia on Tuesday to gather the county's goods up with my crew. And we will haul them in or store them out there. If it's raining, I will go ahead and take them out there if I can talk some of the folks into taking them. I've got a few connections out there. Maybe we can. So, no, the thirteenth annual auction, once again, it's a consignment auction, ten percent commission. We pay back ninety percent and that ten percent goes into the Masonic Lodge Scholarship Fund. I want to say something about the scholarships around here. Now, we give them off a lot of money in this community, in this county for scholarships. This last semester, we had two of our scholarship recipients not apply for their second payment on their scholarship. I don't know if maybe we're giving the scholarship to the wrong students for the wrong reasons, but it seems like there's lots of money out there maybe for them to go. They're neglecting to use the leverage that these scholarships apply upon. But if anybody has any pull on the scholarship committee, I would urge you to direct that money towards trade schools and that kind of thing. We need mechanics. We need partners. We need plumbers. We need electricians, air conditioning people. And I understand that the school has even talked about maybe giving doing an air conditioning course and what have you up there, so that would be good. So the scholarship auction is still a good thing. The kids that don't have the opportunity to go to college still are benefiting from this thing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. This week, this weekend, Saturday morning.
Are those that, are those that did not apply for their second, are they still enrolled?
They are. Well, that's a step. We did get, we did get an enrollment sheet from them. That's what they have to give us in order to get their second payment. So I don't know if they're dropping out. A few years back also, we decided to give a scholarship to juniors in college rather than just freshmen. They would apply for it because people run out of money. And sometimes those kids go that first semester and find out that a five hundred dollar scholarship is not going to help them stay in college, so they don't go back to college. That's a good good observation. But they also get to their junior year and all of a sudden, all these scholarship opportunities, Pell Grants, what have you, kind of fall to one side and they have no longer have the means to do that. So scholarships to those kind of kids in their third year of college is also a relative thing.
Twelve noon on Friday.
On Friday. Starts at nine o'clock. We'll start passing out bidders' numbers at seven o'clock in the morning. I think Bethel Baptist will be out there with a concessions that day. So they will have breakfast burritos and what have you and donuts and as well as lunch out there for folks who want to hang around. So come early and peruse it. By the way, it's open all the time out there. You may come out there and see what it is that we're unloading so that you can find that exact thing that you've always wanted to purchase.
The school bus.
School bus, yeah. There we go. I think we're going to have fireworks there too. So, you know, we got all kinds of things out there. We sold a rubber dial, bought a bell one, one time that supposedly was in front of the chicken ranch at La Grange. That's the story. See if I will see a bell. Talk to Pat Dial. Thank you.
The next, the next item there is a notice of the hotel occupancy tax for four thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars from the wall cabinet manx of one month of January. That's still going along pretty good. Keeps a pretty good revenue stream and therefore its purpose.
May I, may I say something about that, sir? The new cabinets have been installed, the second phase of that group. We're still waiting for the freestanding cabinets in the center of the room, but the wall cabinets have been delivered. And we're set to put any exhibits into those. Also, I want to remind you that April eleventh is the crawfish and cannons celebration out there. And you go online and get your tickets for that. We're going to have lots of music and lots of crowd ebbs and eighths. So get your tickets early. We'll be over at four o'clock in the afternoon. It starts about ten. It is started with the Good Night Loving Fun Run. They're not calling it a fun run. I can't imagine a run being fun, so Good Night Loving Run. So that's why it starts it off and then at ten o'clock crawfish and cannons starts. Thank you.
What, what day, Mark?
It's the eleventh of April. So it's, yeah, a month away. And you can buy tickets online.
They really do?
And entering with the gate of the fort, you're going to necessarily have a ticket to get in.
Online order.
Online through the CBB, G R M CBB. You can also search crawfish and cannons under Google.
Notice also in the package for our appendage of defense, commission statement on board of twenty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. That's how they calculated, I guess, today. About coming in late on the year, toward the end of year. That's a little more than what we were saying last time.
How much do we spend? How much was the percentage last time?
About ten percent. Out of number three, A, discuss primary election report, Lawrence Solomon. Young County Election Commission reported on that this morning earlier, so we'll turn this over to Lauren. She'll give you the report on the primary election. Please look into the cameras.
Cameras are not my favorite. I'm doing good to stand over here instead of with my back fit. So for the first time in the six and a half years that I've been here, we had a state inspector, which was interesting. She keeps snapping pictures.
Just ignore it.
So the state inspector came at seven o'clock on election day and get every polling place twice and came to courthouse twice to help watch what all was happening. And she had a whiz of questions and things from the state that she was required to get answers to. And so she stayed till about nine that night, maybe. Talked to all the poll workers, talked to Marcia, talked to me, talked to Alicia, talked to somebody else. Can't think now who it was. Did a really good job of making a very thorough inspection. Came back with two critiques. One is that the loving fire department is not necessarily the most ADA compliant building she's ever seen. And I explained to her, we knew that. We've gotten that report in the past. The problem with it is that unless somebody wants to pour a, you know, flat cement roadway out there, it's not going to be ADA compliant. She said there was someone that came in on a walker, so she knew that there was some accessibility, but it's not necessarily the greatest. The other critique she had was a training issue. We did go over, again, training that on election day, unlike during early voting, a person who needs assistance must have somebody from each party stand with them at the booth. During early voting, you only have one. And so she got to one of the polls and that didn't happen on election day. We trained on it, but they forgot and there's a lot of stuff they're doing that day. So human error was kind of the point there. Other than that, she really didn't have a lot of critiques at all. She was, she was very pleased with the setups of all the polling places. She was really impressed with our election night procedures. So all in all, it went really well. One of the things I want to say about it is that I could not have done it without several of them helping. Jimmy and his guys helped load all the equipment into a trailer and we made one trip around the county rather than six or seven that I calculated it probably would have taken in just my car. Marcia was big in helping, you know, make sure election night went really well and Cheryl and some of those girls, the sheriff's department. Awesome to me. They take really good care of helping the machines get back in and then they stayed till I left. I felt very secure with three copies of alcohol with me. So it is a long night, but this was probably one of the smoothest elections I've run. Didn't get a lot of flack from voters. We didn't get a lot of crazy questions. So it was, it was really a good election and this was the first time I wasn't shaking all night. So it was, it was really good, so.
Just one comment. I went to the vision twenty, twenty that night. Thought back in there about eight thirty and
It was.
There you were about to go.
We had, generally, only is our last group to come in. Number one person that threw us out, but we had a high school kid that came and helped load all their machines for us rather than poll workers trying to do it. And I think that made a huge difference as far as getting numbers in a lot earlier than I was expecting. Usually only is not here till about eight thirty. And so to be done by eight thirty was, was a new feat for us. So it really went very smoothly. We had very little technical difficulties, had a couple of machines that acted like machines and, you know, one of them froze for a minute. We restarted, got it going, and one of them didn't connect up very well. We got it replaced and nothing, nothing ever really went wrong. So very, very pleased with that.
And you just learned we have 36%.
Thirty-six point zero seven percent.
Did we ever remember what right to the last name was?
I don't think I ever asked. I think it started with an M, but that's as far as I'm going to go with it.
She was a very nice person.
She really was.
Did you expect her to be here?
Yeah, uh, she was a surprise.
As much noise as you made in the stadium, did you not expect her to show up?
No, uh, they, they told us, or she told us, that there were a hundred of them in her training class. Um, you can get a, a inspector with a petition from 15 voters and they will call you and tell you that one's coming. Or they will randomly assign. So, um, that was, that was, like I said, a surprise, but it went well. Um, and then they were carrying a helmet and getting one and did it, so.
Well, as important as you have been in creating a template for rural counties and the modern voting machines, you should expect them to come out and see what it is you were doing exactly.
I have invited the secretaries all just a couple of times, especially when we were deploying to their machines and that kind of thing. You want to kind of hang out on election day, watch it all happen, go for it.
I think what they found is absolutely, they had to find something since they were here, so.
Well, and yeah, I mean, they were, they were very minor things and not things that we, we didn't already know about.
But you have to load the machines before.
Right, yeah, there really was. Um, it's a normal, normal issue with them as far as squeezing up because we were working hard. I mean, that just had, what'd I say, between three, like 300 and some odd voters over there. Um, NCTC had over 900, so we kept those machines hot. That makes a difference a lot sometimes.
So, the, uh, the joint that was on social media about the one that ended on one, not another, you're done the other. I think you addressed.
It's filed up here.
Yeah, um, we, so there were several Facebook issues this time.
I was just curious.
Yes, what we found is that voters who thought they saw ZCAN was that the voter didn't realize there was a difference between voter precinct and commissioner precinct. Um, and they didn't realize where they did live in whichever precinct was having an election. Um, I did address that. Um, my, my standard answer to anyone who ever has a question about ballots is please let us know during your ballot, before you hit the pass ballot button, because once it goes in the bucket, we can never find it again. Um, because those still are secret ballots. Um, and so, if you don't tell us before and you show up at 7:05 to tell us that something wasn't on your ballot, there's nothing I can do about it. I mean, um, we did, in both of our bigger locations, have barcode scanners so that we were assured that the person who checked in got the correct ballot issued to. Um, so, you know, it, it was misunderstanding on the voter's part in that instance. Uh, there also was a Facebook post about early voting results. That was a mistake on KFX's website.
You think?
Yes. Um, and we had a conversation and they immediately got their side picked up and taken care of after I called. Um, we also discussed it with the Secretary of State's office and the lead attorney there to make sure that they understood that those numbers were not obviously from my office because I can't even plug in numbers till after 7:00. So, uh, the, the computer literally won't let me start calculating anything until it says 7:00 o'clock. And so, um, yeah, Facebook was, is the vantage of elections existence some days. Um, and we do as much as we can on the front end, but yeah, we're always going to have people complaining about, well, so and so wasn't on my ballot. You don't live in their district. And so, um, I told the commission this morning, I had calls about why wasn't Mac Thornberry's seat on my ballot? Well, because he's way up there. And so. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, um, they see things on TV and they say, oh, well, that says, you know, north central Texas. I'm in north central Texas. Yeah, but there's a big old boundary line right through the middle of it.
I think I had three people contact me that they couldn't find my name and I would immediately report it to, to, uh, you know, it caused, it, it's impossible for it to happen.
Right.
You know, but the explanation coming from me is not working for no problem. Even talking about elections. And Lauren got that on it. Everybody back? Oh.
Um, you know, if you hear that out in the field, you can ask them, you know, to look at their voter registration card. Um, and it's got, plus their voter precinct number and their COMM, which is commissioner precinct.
Oh, were they?
Um, and yeah, they don't know which districts they live in. So, it is on their voter card and that's why the voter cards are still in important part of elections.
We had a couple called, obviously, but I thought there were only four precincts.
I, I, you know, it's not even concentric circles, you know, but it's, it's one of these district lines that don't make any sense. And here we'll go into the cities and schools and those don't make any sense because they're not straight lines. They're. They, they look like an art board. I mean, they look like a connected art, art board. So, um, you know, we do the best we can to educate voters, but there's 11,631 of them and they don't all call in and get some listening to the captions.
We actually have eight voting precincts?
Nine.
Nine voting precincts? We'll start with number five.
They start with number five.
We're not correlated with.
No, and they're random numbers too, because it's five, six, seven, 10, 16, 20, 22, 23, 24.
And what criteria did that follow?
I don't know, I don't know if that happened when the county was created.
Census blocks.
Well, I don't know, how do they get numbers?
Census blocks?
Yeah, well, do you, yeah, do you, each commissioner precincts got to have about 25% population bracket within it and then within those, those boundary lines, there's a little census block.
That determines the number of the precinct?
And they, those.
We didn't, they didn't give them those numbers, we were told that.
We were assigned those numbers.
We were assigned those, yeah.
We don't know for what reason.
We don't question the same, they said this is true.
We should.
I don't know why they're not in, in order number.
One, two, three.
Yeah, which would make sense, but.
Should be easier to explain to our voters.
Well, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, because then if you get commissioner one, but voter precinct two.
Maybe you start at six and like.
Two, five, six.
Yeah, right.
Got three different ones?
So, anyway, and then, you know, you get the, the constable precincts that get through the center of some of those. It's just, it's great, so.
It's definitely based on population.
Yeah. And then you got a hospital district that really doesn't make any sense. So, um, yeah, so I think everything went really well. Uh, we talked about this morning that we'll figure out maybe a rental idea for getting machines out in November. Uh, unless you want to offer your cargo trailer and manpower again. That worked really well. Um, we were done by two, which is normally what it takes me to set up a regular election. Um, we deployed all but four machines this time. We kept four just for spares. Uh, so, we had 16 machines in NCTC, 14 in Methodist, five in Onlys and three in Loving and Wega. So, um, we never had more than about a 10-minute line at the college, so that was, that was really good.
We'll do it again if it works later.
Yep.
More comments, please?
I'd like to make, nice question. Does that, uh, election versus the state, will that generate major work or report?
I assume so, but I don't know.
Come to you.
I assume so, but I don't know. I mean, this is again, the first time I've ever seen this. Um, she, she is turning that report into the state, but I don't know where it goes from there. I assume it will have some kind of reporting back to me, um, but I don't know when or how.
Claudia Murphy, City Governor. Thank you.
Other question? Lauren's doing a good job, I think, on my, 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 my need a, with capabilities that she stays out of the heart, heart of the league that she's up to date on all of it. And you're probably right, Commissioner, she might have had something to do with the conversations that she's had with several states. All of a sudden, that.
They seem to like.
She's not been bashful, I'd like to know.
No, I'm, I'm not bashful about letting them know this. The things that work in Karen County don't work in Young County. Um, and that was one thing that Rachel even said was, you know, I'm going to fill this out, but I have to write all these explanations because it says you're supposed to do it this way and that's not feasible where we are. Um, you know, ADA is one thing and that's fine, but at the same time, Loving only has so many buildings. And, and, you know, pretty much gravel driveways everywhere I've seen over there.
That's the newest building.
Yeah, and it's probably one of the most compliant. Um, they did, since I did, since we did that ADA report, they went and did a, um, not a knob, but a push lever door handle, which brought it up even further, which was really nice. Uh, that, they did that on their own, I didn't ask for that. Um, but.
Why can't they like bring a truck out and let them pull into a bay?
And we talked about that, but, uh, you know.
Just buy it.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that. I don't want to disrupt any, any emergency services, you know, needs ever. And so, when we went in there the other day, there was bunker gear in places. I don't touch their stuff because married to a first responder, I know the bunker needs to be where it is so that they can go in and take care of business. Um, now pulling a truck out, yes, that was something we talked about that could happen, but even then, um.
Probably go through that door.
Yeah, the door was blocked with cords and machines and, I mean, the room, the room where we sit is literally like this big. I mean, it's not.
Well, actually, basically, the only big one is fixing the pot out there, asphalt or whatever, just get out of the vehicle. And we may as well just have to.
Is the, is the state interested in supplying grants to help support, uh, small rural voting places to? I know they will criticize it for not being that way, but those things are mandated.
They did provide COVID money a while back, uh, which is the Help America Vote Act. And we talked about solutions. The only real solution that would be temporary to some extent is that we can get heavy, heavy rugs like, um, um, like the, the soft rugs where you stand and, and roll them out there, but nobody sells those. And I talked to Mike Srenal and I said, do you even have like runners, like the wets that we can rent? Nope, don't have those either, so, um. Yeah, I mean, I asked for a big rug and he said, no, we don't have. It does, but, um, I told the commission this morning, that is not a, a fix for that problem. That is, that is a requirement anyway, but it's not the, it, it doesn't mean that now we're ADA compliant. Um, yes, any location has a, has several machines that can be taken out to a car. Um, but the voter is still supposed to be able to get into those locations. Um, now, with all that said, when we had the ADA compliance review a couple of years ago, the lady that was with me was in a wheelchair and she got into the room. It's not the easiest, but for where we are and what we're doing, it is, you know, it is somewhat accessible. So, um, it could be a lot worse, it could be better, but again, it's not our building and so.
I'm not saying those things don't happen in urban environments, but financially, it's more of a burden on rural voting than it is. And that's another one of those disparities between urban and rural that we're seeing in Texas.
Right, and yet, money that's allocated is not necessarily more heavily allocated to counties who don't have as much tax space and, you know, budget difference. So, if they try to distribute it evenly, which.
It's a big percentage, yeah.
So, um, I don't know. But we had, like I said, 36% turnout and that was super of the mail-in ballots. I've never had this happen, get 83% return back to us. We normally hover somewhere between 50 and 60 miles, so really excited by that. Told the mailman, I said, I've never seen.
How many mail ballots did, kind of?
Came in, 543, I believe. So, out of the 652 that we sent out. Yeah, it was really good. Trying to figure out what the mailman was doing because he kept running out. Really impressed by that, so, um, anyway.
Any other question? Lauren, not a big one actually. I appreciate the report, I appreciate the effort and.
Appreciate y'all and all the help that I got from the point of view, many, 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 many departments.
With Washington, heavily, DA was much, and expertise.
Thank you very much. The other thing that helped was, um, Alicia Henderson's been in my office since virtually here as part of it. And so, she took a lot of stuff off of things that I would like to pass off and that helped. We'll continue that as we go. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item number four, consider county clerk manager's previous basis February 24th, 2020. Are there any additions to legal instructions?
Chief, Chief Perry, item number 12.
Item number 12. On the road crossing?
On the road. It showed Mike was second and Mike was third.
Oh, good.
So, she's already prayed the doctor, I sent her a text. But that said, uh, like.
Okay, that's correct.
So, it says we make a motion in second?
Well, it's a new deal.
A handful?
I don't remember who said, she, she remembers she had to look down and say.
Water slide, water change, Ross Ranch Road, up, up to Compton Valley in precinct two. That line, DM, motion, second, uh, not true, second.
Yeah, it was.
True, second.
Come on. Make the motion.
Yeah, make the motion, he said.
It's got me in all places.
Yeah, we weren't good.
She's been notified and has been corrected.
Yeah, well, it's mad in my vote.
Wiley said about 12:00. All in favor? Okay, item number five, is considered better finance report, updates on security reviews. Talking about $500,000.
Yeah, that's it. My, it's good, like you said, we have, uh, 13 million, 21,453,990 in accounts. We're over an excess pledge of $500,047. All is happy.
Well, motion by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Wiley to approve the financial report as presented on paper. Item number six is considered, call for late handbooks and vouchers that are or may be payable.
We all may have.
I'm sure she doesn't have anybody in handbooks.
I did have some starting, I didn't finish them, but I'll do next one. On vouchers, um, 114,117 dollars and 73 cents. And out of the general is 102,001, 102, 110 and 45 cents. And there is Don's being taken in.
So, move on vouchers.
Second, then.
I have a motion by Mr. Perry, second by, I mean, side, to approve the vouchers payable as presented on paper. Uh, okay, four, zero, and one.
I also have, um, I want you to have something to request, we paint out a justice court technology, JP.
I need to replace some creatures down there. Um, I need to replace three and, uh, all of together is a little less than a thousand dollars. He has over 40,000 in that, which after that is.
thing, which happened that year, to the JP, JP one, so.
So, what?
How the technology from JP Technology.
I have a motion by Mr. Wiley, uh, second by Rogers, um, to expand funds from the Court, JP Court Technology Fund, for three creatures, in the amount of approximately a thousand.
About approximately twelve hundred, so, originally, Judge Hearn was gonna give a different one, and he changed his mind, so I'm getting about that, so.
JP Technology.
Twenty percent.
Approximately twelve hundred.
Yes, sir.
Right, right. Kyle, five. Can I, I will.
Thank you.
Anything else, uh, Judge, Mr. Subgus, Texas?
Then on the next page, yeah.
This is not, it's judged, uh, but it's invoice coming in, and I guess I'm, I'm very, very awkward here. Actually, with the Phoenix, our association needs to want, uh, entertain motion to approve that, that, um, all that, all in favor, uh, that's in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, uh, which is already.
Let me make a, I think it's not, uh, I could do a question about that, we had a visit with Drew Springer Wednesday, and we were discussing the, uh, speaker that's gonna need to be changed in Austin, and we kind of walked down the path of how we got the last one, and, uh.
And, and the residents?
That was interesting, yes, it was, uh, there was a lot of discussion, and, uh, we discussed SB twenty-nine, which of course, as what you well know, says that we cannot use taxpayer money to belong to an organization that has a lobbying arm in it, uh, we've just approved the invoice that, that does that, uh, and they're gonna come back after that again, proposition three on this class ballot was about that, and it passed ninety-eight percent across the state, ninety-eight percent.
It was twisted.
I'm sure it did, I'll be like, well, probably right here, the, this that we just had, Lauren Sullivan and election, and the lobbying, the core laws and bad laws, and getting all that, that would, that wouldn't allow that, under, under that.
Wouldn't allow that proposition.
Or go down there and do that under our jurisdiction, uh, and under our budget.
She was saying SB twenty-nine is gonna be good, bad?
Well, it will silence the voice, it will silence the voice of local governments.
That's exactly the point, and that's exactly the point I made to Drew Springer, that what they're doing is they're giving the voice of government, local government, to the big urban cities and taking it away from rural folks, of course, when you ask somebody, do you think they'll use your tax dollars for a lobbyist, they're gonna say, you know, nothing, you know, and I understand when it's asked that way, you know, have you stopped beating your wife, is the same kind of question that is asked in that proposition, and that's why it got a ninety-eight percent approval, but when they do things to local government down there that they might not have thought of the consequences of, we need to be able to point out to them the error of their ways, and they're trying to take that away from nowhere else. So, if you would, everyone, please work within where you are, do what you can where you are, what you've got, and try to stem the tide, let your representatives know, this body should be politically active enough to stop that from coming down on top of us, uh, Judge Bullock has been very vocal about his opposition to that kind of thing, and I have been very vocal to the two representatives that we have, and I had that conversation after the vote came down, and that was, that was a trap for the voters, really was, and, and I put out the word best I could, let people know, you know, don't vogue gifts for that thing, you know, but of course, people don't, don't think, so, anyway, thank you very much, just wanted to make that statement, but then I had talked to Drew Springer about it already.
It's a play on words, Paul, and it wasn't the right, it's the way.
What did Drew say?
That was, I'm curious, huh?
What did Drew say? Uh, he started giving the same runaround they gave last, that last session.
He's a politician.
Uh, if you don't remember, Drew, uh, Drew was, yeah, Drew, uh, it, it failed in committee, it didn't get out of committee, SB twenty-nine, it didn't ever make it to the floor because of the nays within committee, but Representative Springer was not one of those nays, he was one of those yads.
What he didn't, what he didn't sponsor.
I think his name was on the bill.
If they wanted to do away with it, they don't wanna do away with lobbying altogether, yeah, for us to do that, but to silence this segment, um, to silence the voice of local governments is an attempt to centralize government, to get away from that pushback on things that are not proper, and they don't have a clue.
They don't have a clue, that's the thing, they don't have a clue, yeah, and it's basically redlining, they are marking us off and pushing us to the side, we'll listen to these people, because those large urban counties, they, they can hire their own lobbyists within the, within the county, and the only thing we've got to move for is a little bit of our membership dues to TAC, the judges, in order to, auditors, same way, get our voice heard, and it's important that we continue to be able to do that.
We may not be the biggest, but we're, uh, we, what we do in our part of the world is very important.
Right, collectively, we're very important.
We're very important.
The food and energy comes from where we are.
Exactly, and, and they, they don't understand that, but that goes back to the fact that the people out there don't know where a gallon of milk comes from, or anything else, or gas goes in their vehicle, you know, they, they're misunderstood, they live in a different world than what we live in out here.
You, you will see it again next session, and they will be full of it because the, you know, the powers that be in Austin are already getting it together to do it, and they're gonna use this ninety-eight percent proposition three approval to push it through.
That's a party platform.
And this is a party platform, I just don't understand the Republican platform doing it.
That's what that proposition is about.
Yeah, all the propositions were party platforms, they were on the Republican ballot. Thank you.
Okay, next political point there, and then Lisa, there's all, uh, item is discussed, consider commercial and elect, elect, Industrial Electronics Incorporated firearm inspection magnates proposal, and I'll let Cheryl, uh, break the on that.
Well, when the fire department came and did our inspection, the other day, our fire system showed a tag on it, we've not been inspected since seventeen, so we got to check the records and we paid them in eighteen and they came and did it, but they didn't mark it, that was through Johnson Control.
Wow.
Put a tag on it?
They did put a tag, well, so then we got to looking, and actually, we paid for it in nineteen and they never came and did it, so, the company's, uh, following through, so I got a proposal from a company out there, out of Fort Worth, Johnson Control.
That's a former back over, semblance of a male.
Yes, and since Johnson's hanging over, it seems to be a little wacky.
And this, this, the one that we paid was out of?
Um, Fort Worth.
There was one which was.
I got, this is the proposal, commercial and industrial electronics, so, um, what they proposed currently for an inspection, we're paying eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year, and then they monitor the fire system, and for that, we've been paying six hundred and eighty, where commercial is proposing inspection of five hundred and seventy dollars a year, and then forty-seven dollars a month, plus, and then a one-time charge of five hundred to come and put their cellular in our fire system.
Or they come off with a gun law.
Yes, so they can do the monitoring also, and get away from Johnson from this point.
Well, it's, it's, uh, come to the point where it looks like the Johnson control is not servicing us very well.
I talked to, um, you know, the other day, I called, um, Jerry David to tell him that we're working on getting this inspection done, and he asked me who we're considering going with, and I told him and he said, we have several people, we have several companies that use them and that haven't had control, so, that was kind of reassuring, so.
Well, I'm sure that we accept the proposal for commercial, industrial, electronics, and we're talking.
So, what do you think?
It would be a little cheaper.
Are we getting a refund from?
Yes, Sherry called them and requested email, um, and they said that they have refunds and money since they didn't, they said they tried to call and set it up, and so, what number did you call, and it was some seller, we got to look at, and it was a custodian that's been gone for five years, it's his number, so, I don't.
What was they doing, doing contractual work with the custodian?
Well, whenever they would come here, that's who they need with the custodians to go through.
They'd be a contact person, but.
But usually, our number is on, you know, to.
An unsecondary contact person?
So we can pay them for sure.
And I think this was, they generally call, yes, we had to pay them.
Wiley, second. Approve the, um, call the proposal for fire inspection and monitoring from commercial and industrial electronics incorporated, and, uh, five hundred and seventy dollars per year for the inspection service, plus forty-seven dollars per month for monitoring things, and then a one-time, um, installation of their equipment to allow them to monitor that.
And they did say if we approved this, that they would get out there and do their inspection as soon as possible, so, we can get back with the fire department to come and check us out again.
Okay, move, move, second by Wiley, all in favor, uh, here, I will. Item number seven, discuss, consider boy Vaughn, uh, go in and be, if you, Chief Clark, Justice, the big, pretty, one, five thousand, Bob Vaughn.
I do have a question.
Well, she's leaving, they went out March first, but, so they continue, so we really need to cover any full.
You knew my question, wasn't it?
We checked it out, we, why haven't you done it, I told you that, we wanna be, be under Vaughn while she is still down there.
I move, second, Chris, first.
Sherry was checking.
If it is.
And they yet, you got.
I move.
For Wiley, to approve, all in favor?
Okay.
It's right, it's right.
I was wondering, I was thinking on grid.
She got behind that?
I will, she's, I say.
Did you got that or you were like really?
Do you want a copy of it also?
Yeah.
On my screen, copy, you have copy, and I'll send it back to the board.
Because I wonder if they mentioned that, like, voting thing with my, cause I went to the polls and I like voted and I was like, I didn't see Mike say anything, I took it all, all the way getting back to the office to realize that I'm not in precinct.
Well, God bless you for making a number.
You're welcome.
We did, we, there was a handful, and we, and they were all, people just.
They don't like, they don't think it all will be through, but I even, even knowing like with those precincts and all, it took me getting from NCTC to the office to realize.
You're extending the Texas government, right, yeah, every county, every county has four precincts by constitutional demand.
And seven five, how many is five?
That's a, that's a fifth precinct that they put the equipment into, it's not a constitutional requirement.
Yeah.
Wichita Falls is one of them.
See, I don't even think Arizona has county, like, they have county government, but not like.
They don't provide the county, have that.
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, I only voted in two elections in Arizona, that's the lights.
And you were in one county?
Maricopa.
Maricopa, Aracallos County?
Oh, Aracallos County.
Yeah.
Lauren, uh, a really fine child.
Oh, she did an awesome job.
Uh, the inspector, she went through, asking me several questions, very happy we were doing cybersecurity, had to show her and everything, I told Lauren, said she looked out there, she said she was hooking you.
My.
That may be right, so.
Finally come around.
Real, real nice lady.
Well, like I say, the noise we've been making across state with, with voting machines and what have you, I'm surprised they wait until now to do this, how are we doing with nickel?
We're good, good.
How's things, I don't know, do you get wet, get a little rain?
Yeah, good.
Enough of the cells and dust, maybe stop people from sneezing for a day or two?
Maybe.
Yeah, you got your emergency, uh, plan in place for the coronavirus?
Need for it.
Wash your hands and blow your nose, or wash your face after you blow your nose.
Someone said you need to wash your hands while you're just eating your bag of Cheetos and you're fixing to put on a white shirt.
Or like you just slice some jalapenos and you're fixing to put your front.
There you go.
Yes.
And wash your vegetables you bought from the store, cause you don't know who's been handling the vegetables.
Okay.
It's gum, it's, it's, uh.
See, in, in our office, we don't even have hot water.
Do you not?
We've, we've reported it several times to.
Nothing's been done yet?
Nothing's been done.
You got plenty of hand sanitizer, enough to dry your hands out?
It like, it grosses me out because the water's not just like lukewarm, it's like ice cold, and you wash your hands and you're like, my hands are not cold and dirty and gross.
It's hard to get things into emotion and get them off your hands, though.
I think this virus is getting blown out of.
It way out.
Oh, it is.
And the news media is doing it, they're, you know, it's giving something to, uh, the smokescreen for other things.
You know, there's been a major outbreak every election year?
You noticed that, did you?
Yeah.
I know, I was, I was looking at that the other day.
Ebola was the last one.
Ebola was the last one, two years ago.
Then N one, H one was the year, the, uh, election before that.
Divide people's attention from what's really happening.
It is really weird that Ted Cruz came in contact with that guy, did you see that?
Yeah, I saw that, he self-quarantined himself.
Yeah, yeah.
He would have been criticized had he not done that, and looked like a fool about doing it, I mean, it's, it's a no-win situation.
I could find somebody.
And the president could never do enough from him.
If I could find somebody with it, I could shake their hand and quarantine, so.
Would you?
Yeah.
Then that much, if you'd been away on medical, fam, what, leave it, it wouldn't get paid, you don't need the money?
Oh, I can get paid, I have enough sick.
You get that from the bank or way?
Yeah, yeah, I've got enough sick, I don't think I've ever been sick.
How long was that quarantined, ten days?
Uh, seven, like fourteen.
Yeah, I thought it was fourteen.
So he's gonna be just at home for two weeks, so.
I can tell you, there's some nasty cruise ships out there, they can stay on board that long.
They're putting that one in out of Pacific, uh, today, putting it open, they're taking people who are firm, sick, onto a hospital, but everybody else, they're, they're only doing, uh, military boards, they're actually going to, yeah, on military.
Treat it like a plague, right?
The interesting thing is more people have died from the normal flu.
Normal flu.
And they have the exact same symptoms, literally, to a T.
Four people died of the immune in Detroit. Yeah, and that's a plague, so.
I, I'm going back to Arizona, it, no, but they have the coronavirus there, they have like seven.
And that's a plague, so.
I, I'm going back to Arizona. No, but they have the coronavirus there, they have like seven confirmed cases, so I said I'm gonna bring it back and give it together.
Are you, are you washing your money, are you paying attention to the doorknobs, or, you know, you go crazy doing this.
Oh, I know.
You're a good healthy person, you'll be all right. Being locked up in an airplane with a bunch of sick people.
That's gonna be the fun part. Are they gonna start checking temperatures at DFW? That's my question.
Are they checking pictures?
I think they are, they're sending it from Korea or.
Oh, okay, depending on what you're.
Oh, I'm, I'm going to someplace.
No, you'll be all right.
I'll be there. I'm like, oh, I have a fever, sorry, sorry, can't come to town, go back to Texas. That's fine, I'll walk through and check me when I'm in Arizona.
College boy, bringing things back from Mexico.
At least you can wash it off, then you wash your hands all you want, it doesn't work.
Yeah, Mayans are thinking, where we going when the Spaniards showed up?
Exactly.
We should have kept them on the ship.
They should have kept them on the ship.
Yeah, I've got a biology degree, my microbiology course wasn't enough to scare a living person to death, just once.
Yeah, what's out there?
What's out there? Yeah, what could be, what's on our cell.
Your body's an amazing defense system, but sometimes one sneaks in behind the wall.
You know, I had a real good friend of mine, uh, was in the Marines for a long time. Their water was contaminated, everything. Get your guys to the west. And he thought every time he was fine, he got a virus, um, he's been out of the range ten years, he got a virus, he got in there. Well, then all of the stuff that his immune system would hold back, and then he wound up having all kinds of issues. Yeah, it released all that, apparently your immune system would shut down, everything.
I was watching the documentary yesterday on History Channel about foods that made America. After the Civil War, everybody started moving to the cities. And food had started being imported to the cities because no one's growing their own food anymore.
Right.
And no refrigeration, very little way to, to salvage food, safe, people buying drinks, not, people were dying right and left just from the food supply. You know, and until Ted Roosevelt became president, when they passed the Pure Food and Drug Act. Which kept people from putting poisons in whiskey and selling Coca-Cola with cocaine in it and that sort of thing. Those were.
Did you?
Those, those thirty years in America were a bad deal, there were people dying just from having something. You take ice cream for free. Had to have a freezer, keep it. Let them back in order, remember, I have lost live feed, that was recorded again. Down to item number eight. Considered extension agents request for reimbursement, Penny Baron, twenty-one dollar eighty-five cents, plan a wheel, twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred and twenty-six dollars, thirteen cents.
I'm moving to approve these reimbursements. With extension agents, what do you congratulate?
Yeah, congratulations, Penny Baron.
Or anything other child, or anything.
Did she, did she put that on the ground?
She did, little boy.
Little boy, he broke the tie to girls, three boys.
Ah, good. That's quite a foul thing.
That is.
She better put on there to drink, you're holding her face. I think Roger, please keep that second on there.
Was he useful?
Thanks.
Motion by Commissioner Sipes, second of Commissioner Rogers, to approve the request reimbursements, Penny Baron at twenty-one eighty-five, it's planned to be twenty-two hundred, twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents, all in favor? I know that's a big difference there, still stock trading. Number nine, discuss February activity reports for Daniel and Cheryl. Chief John Horowitz. What do you expect, pretty low? Jerry, look on the menu. Absolutely. And what did you do with all that data? Everybody in the cup.
All right. Mitch is off to join Ireland, so he's out here getting back to.
Our? Everybody makes more money. Everybody, everybody should have a lot of our business, like those.
All right, average daily population in jails, fifty-six, kind of going down a little bit. Travelled three thousand four hundred, three thousand five hundred and forty-nine miles. Transported seven, TDCA, um, picked up six.
I'm gonna leave Bill.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna make it out there. Five hundred thirty-three miles traveling to MSM heart facilities, I have zero down for what we did, but that was going to be fifteen appointments for us taking them back and forth. From there. Four inmate businesses, dentists is on there this time around, I guess we hit some dental issues. Twenty-one class Cs for Graham, um, two class Cs for Almond, and two are housed for other counties.
Beautiful field, really.
Oh, yes, sir?
Beautiful.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Some of that's my deputy's fault.
Dawn and Juan.
All right, Bill Juan, we'll slip over to the patrol. We had eighty-five public calls for service. Eighty-one civil process papers, sir, two people taken into custody for mental health reasons, um, a resume for the lines for twenty-eight. There's three hundred sixty traffic stops, twenty-eight citations issued. They generated forty-two, fifty for civil process. Two forensic interviews that were in this house. There were, uh, three, uh, three arrests made for drug-related charges, six nine point four grams of methamphetamine. There were twelve K nine deployments, uh, resulted in three arrests, eight grams of methamphetamine, and three grams of THC. They wanted to note too, the K nines went to all the schools in the county this time around to make sure they.
Is that included in?
They won't, yes, sir.
For all of the other deployments of?
Yes, sir.
For Young County Sheriff's Department or other agencies?
There is not another agency this month that we get, those twelve were for us, and that included Newcastle, Albany, and Grand.
So that was for a, a actual search?
Those were for requests, um, they just wanted us to come walk through and be seen, so we came through, made sure we hit every school.
Is that a common ratio for traffic stops versus citations?
It seems to be, yes, sir, um, sheriff's office is more about just giving, uh, like compliance, um, we have to issue a citation, we know that. They're not necessarily out there being tracked at all, it's just.
Those aren't being picked on by the sheriff's department.
Correct, yes, sir.
Informed.
Those twenty-eight obviously deserve.
Deserve a citation.
The sheriff.
The sheriff got picked for jury duty, he's down there.
I'm very hard to work for.
Sheriff. I, I've been trying to get him.
Thank you, we couldn't choose him. Everybody dressed, didn't give him to you.
No, it's, uh, it's the judiciary, yeah, I've got him and one of my deputies, and two of my deputy's wives, involved in, all of them.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number ten, consider interloper cooperation agreement contract for inmate housing services with Knox County, if available, for fighters, private armies, and everybody else. Been executed by Stan Wolker County Judge and their sheriff, and their partner.
We haven't housed anybody over there yet.
We have one.
We're hauling one right now, for, I have been, but that was purposely contracted.
So we want to contract it all. This, this, this contract will not renew in its own right, it has to be renewed. He said it's open, I can remember, twentieth of, uh, in the December, I think it's December this year.
It's automatic, no? It's all, I think it's all probably called.
They're not automatically at the termination until the termination modification provision's settled.
I read.
Community trade, yeah.
We have, I think we have one banner and one. I mean inmate.
Motion by, I'm sure the second of Commissioner Sipes, to bring for inmate housing with Knox County. And our grand parade, I think, I have several contracts that we have in other counties. I can call them forty-five dollars. All in favor? I guess we still have one, you know, John, we still have one in Knox County?
Yes, sir.
Item number eleven, that is discussed, consider policy of donating and accepting such gifts that may come to our way. Our SO and many some other departments receive donations, sometimes they may be cash donations, sometimes they may be an island of donation, loan, and cash, and sometimes it seems like maybe they might be. Credits that places to Young County, for Young County, so the other departments, your business. Regardless. Where the company, they got passed through the court to be accepted. Sometimes we may be able to accept those in groups that, um, the sheriff wrote this to the kitchen, to discuss, discuss that a little bit. I don't know, we can have a talk about some county, it would be personnel policy, it would be county policy. How donation, thank you.
Have any cash donations?
Well, yes, this is a, a check from a couple, the, two of the Young County Sheriff's Office, and, you know, even a small donation, three hundred dollars. She didn't, but they didn't specify what it was for, I called Travis, and he said, you know, he would like it either on our equipment, but that is our K nine. And we had accepted K nine.
It didn't have a specific.
No, sir, no, sir.
Someone can donate, I donate with a specific cause in mind, so if I wanted to donate, say. An item, a, a money or a item itself or credit like that to the inmate work group program, they can do that specifically, and we will, we have to. Place that much money in, or appropriate that much money, I guess you could say, to those that call.
You do it as a budget amendment, or you do it the next budget session?
Probably the way.
But I think they're doing it to exhale, and I'm not getting allowed, I need to get with exhale, get a list, uh, and, because they're keeping a ton of those things they donate.
That is my kitchen on the table.
I need to talk to him about it, I think as long as we have it coming in and good, clear trail and how it went out, and when, when he made with, but. Said I need to get with exhale and get them to send me. Okay, that's, okay. And I'll just get with them, so when they get a donation, please notify me, and then I can bring it forward and tell you what they have.
Something like this is, what, who checked it?
It's made to Young County Sheriff's Department.
Well. I don't know what that name, the. Style, I don't know.
I'm sure.
Take that, sale this company to the department. On that report, always a positive answer to me. Of course, be accepted. It can be accepted for, I guess, so programmed, so it's working great.
Should those people be contacted and ask if they'll give us some funds specifically? Because it looks to me like if, if you give just a general donation, going to general fund, be used as we budgeted out to the sheriff's office?
I, you know.
I think the search case probably, I have, please, I've, if I manage to ditch to. Hand that to that program, which can cure bugs, or, um, maybe even, um. Be a special budget.
Yeah, just add to a budget and then transfer out of an account into that budget. Respend.
First time, that's kind of tables.
Yeah, and, see, I'm never getting home vacation and.
Aren't they donating lawn mowers a lot times too, they think?
It's actually made in the lawn. Work programs.
Which is money.
Which was real, I mean, I really needed to get a, you know, a list or something when they did that.
Think asking those people where they'd like to go in the sheriff's department, would it be to answer that question?
Uh, our financial department, they do those kinds of things. Put it once a year, once a quarter, once a month, the way they, um, except for somebody, where they came from. With that factor is.
I mean, if it's my, if it's like a little work room, then I guess they do.
Probably generally to the county, or like, particularly any council programs, the K nines or equipment.
Yeah, we've had, we've had K nine donations that came through here. Also, Ann had brought up something to me before this even came up, that we need to do something with it, and it's that four hundred dollars that was given in the name of Jill Parker.
Is that still hanging around?
It is, and we talked about it before, and I don't, you know, we talked about, but then it would look like we gave it, and the county's not giving a donation to it.
Can you not put it in the general fund and increase the budget to, increase the sheriff's budget by four hundred dollars and transfer that in?
Or what, I mean.
Whatever they need.
Was it just a memorial?
It was.
They want to have the operation in the sheriff's office.
I thought the main, the main goal of it was to benefit any first responders, families. I thought the main, the main goal of it was to benefit any first responders, families that.
Didn't need to give an SOS.
We don't do that, yeah.
You know.
Yes, I know, we don't, we don't do that. And so, you know, the money's in our general fund, what can we do?
That's exactly what SOS was designed to do.
It was. But then if we write a check and get it, it looks like we're getting, we're not. I mean, I could put on a check each donation so that it showed who donated each amount, but. Ann and I were down there, we don't need it in there because it's not.
It's not doing anybody any good.
It's not, no, it's not doing anybody good, it's not working.
Just talking about this for a couple weeks, so this now.
Well, that's what I think how we can handle.
Now we got seven of them though.
Well, I, the others already deposit, it was put in there a while back.
Contact these folks and say, hey, where, where would you want that to go?
Join.
Then we can. I think that's something. Just contact those folks and ask them where they'd like to go in the sheriff's office. Name and category, what are you worried about?
They need to specify.
Okay, K nine.
Don't make that easy. The state goes to John Oars House about his.
I really like that.
The state. Always drink, I can always use drink. Training.
People play us here, so this money only go here and then we can have it from here.
Thank you for the donation, we're talking to you.
There'll be some kind of body that's in there.
Jimmy knew that might be a good news story sometime.
I love all these people, see what they're gonna tell us. They were breaking to the sheriff's department deputies for something, they did on security and protection. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's gonna be table, and then I think we're gonna have another one, I should, another check. Future, replace this back on the future.
Whatever we figure, everybody's doing make policy.
Yeah, we need to make policy on it. Like it not be cash donations, all need to be checked. An in-kind donation, then you pass through before they're given.
And then be specified what they need to do.
And I'll ask you something, if, if, if we ask someone about the use of their pasture, put dirt on it. That's, that's in sense of donation to the county, isn't it?
Or they give us.
Something of value.
They give us dirt.
They give us dirt.
But do what Jimmy and I did, we, we got letters from landlords.
I know, but you can't get approved by the court that day that you're out there working on.
No, but what we do is we make all that to the yard to get proof.
That stops your project right where it leaves it undone and.
Tell Jimmy two or three times, and I'm like, maybe thirty-two, gotten the letters from the property owner. I did that, I started that.
Then that should just be.
I started that.
That you get a letter of permission and, and, and have approved next post fact. It's an in-kind donation.
Whether it allows the county to place that pretty close to the. Where, where something.
Save lots of money in time.
All, all the way back to, I mean, you spend a lot of time, fuel and time.
So if we could create a policy that would address that.
I've got, I've got permission places for, we're creating places for their stuff.
And just, you know, make a, maybe just a notation of verbal permission, if it's possible. Or written permission.
I got, I, well, when I did it, when I got mine, I got, it just said, you know, we're donating some, some rock, or, you know, some river rapids or whatever, and.
We cleaned the ditch and dumped the dirt over a fence just this last week.
And then you did it with Chris Smith that one time.
And I, I did go and get a letter of permission.
They do the same thing with this right here, get a letter, has, if the box is important, they want to donate, check off the site with, they handle with the money.
But the main thing is to get the plan with the sign, that way.
I just don't want to get into anybody using landowner or us of doing anything in profit. All we're trying to do is.
We're all busy eyes out there thinking that we're doing something for somebody else. Item number twelve, discuss certain trade of the one forty M three for one fifty cat motor grader. Thank you, Roger. Yeah, everybody's got a copy of, we have all these conversations, everybody's got a copy of two and three motor graders. I traded one, there were three here, it's easier to budget that way. A little less budgeting, amount of money to do it that way. We got a one forty M three. And we're gonna trade it for a one fifty, the twenty twenties, they're gonna start naming them one fifties. Here twenty twenty, it's, it's not a bigger motor grader, it's just a fat same motor.
They're giving two hundred and fifty.
Yep, uh, cash price on the trade in is like two seventy-seven and change. So they're gonna give me two fifty trade in, so I think that's pretty good. And big spurts going after bids, I think, uh, I think that's a good enough deal.
So you're paying forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand difference?
Forty-five thousand difference. They were just putting the new sticker on for one fifty, they went up to like ten thousand three hundred. So, you know, since I've been here, we've done a lot of increases like that. Tier three motors, tier four motors, they're always jumping, not every third year, they're definitely asking numbers for increases. Plus the percentages, the year of increased percentage, so trade difference is forty-five hundred, that's where I, or forty-five thousand, that's where I budgeted for this year. For this trade, I was looking ahead, it's got three year fifteen hundred hour extended warranty, already figured in there. So it's in my budget, that's what I wasted for forty-five thousand. How many, all right, can you show us one count?
Eight hundred and nine?
It's a, it's a year old.
Is it, I, yeah.
Is that immediate deal? Delivery, always, they gotta go to Kansas, you know, seven stores, there's only one in the United States, and that's Kansas, maybe I'll go get it. Get back on track and wonder if it's, anything about this forty-five thousand dollar.
Faster than buying a car. About how many months? Eight months? This doesn't buy. Thought it was your rice maker. When was that one put into service?
Redwood, two years ago.
Uh, I think.
You remember what the. You remember what you did on Hall Ford, the Russian Dawson machine was two seventy-seven and change. Motion, Rogers. Second, can I say? Talking about Mr. Rogers, approve motor grader trade, three sixty-three. One, one forty M three for a new series one fifty. Cost two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars trade value for present one for net cost forty-five thousand dollars for secure trade. Black equipment, black equipment that will have to be advertised, have to be bid by order.
They're going up a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
I thought they.
They'll a hundred and five thousand dollars in thirteen years.
Thirteen years.
And we should get. Two thousand five hundred dollars on the.
All in favor?
Stacy, do I need to send a sign call?
Okay, item number thirteen, discuss the considered burn restriction, I don't believe I have any time to put on the.
Any green? Is there any green in wood?
What is mine? Who you get? Those greens, what you?
All in favor?
How do you hear?
All right, sorry, my, yeah. All three of them?
Yep.
Yeah. Do you want to sign one of these and all?
Two thousand two forty cents, that's a thousand.